If I could have a member certify closed session for us?
I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters were identified in the mo- as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo. Is there a second for that motion? Thank you, Ms. Hummel and Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner. Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. And moving on to item three-three, approval of our agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented this evening?
Mr. Chair, move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Donner. Any discussion on our agenda? Uh, Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. Uh, Ms. Aller, do we have any speakers for the public hearing on the operating budget?
No, we do not.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Aller.
You're welcome.
Move on to item five-one, announcements and superintendent's report. Dr. Herron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. WJCC schools celebrated Black History Month in February across all of our schools. From guest speakers to a student talent showcase, students and staff engaged in activities to honor and recognize the countless contributions of Black Americans to our country, our state, and the Williamsburg James City County community. At Narge Elementary, special guest Dylan Pritchett, a griho with Arts for Learning Virginia, captured students with the art of West African storytelling. Let's take a look at his visit.
In West Africa, there was someone called a Jaliya. And the French word for the Jaliya is griho. Griho was a storyteller, people of oral tradition, and would tell stories to entertain but also to educate. Especially with an African story.
Let's try that one again. There we go.
In West Africa, there was someone called a Jaliya. And the French word for the Jaliya is griho. Griho was a storyteller, people of oral tradition, and would tell stories to entertain but also to educate. Especially with an African stories, the whole intent is to teach and to learn, uh, and to teach a little critical thinking. When he walked into the forest, they on that same limb, sat that same bird singing yet another beautiful song. The boy, he still admired. And he noticed bird was hungry, so he held out his hand, bird jumped into his palm. He placed it into his pocket and took it home to feed it. So those things that we love, we feed it. If you like music, then first of all, get better at math, because math is music. And you write music with math. Listening is an art. Storytelling is not only the art of telling, it's also the art of listening. Uh, my hope is that they have fun and learn something and go back later and start thinking about the lessons of the story. Because it can only, uh, help them become a better student, a better, uh, a better child, better family members.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Herron. That's very sweet to see. Uh, any board members have a report this evening to share? All right. Okay. We'll move on to item, uh, six, uh, our s- our public comment for the evening from our citizens. Do we have any, Ms. Aller? No? Okay. Um, moving right along to item seven-one in our proposed agenda items. Uh, review request for proposal number nine-two-zero-two-three-eight-zero-eight-five-four, excuse me, audit services. Dr. Herron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Ewen is going to present this item this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Herron. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This agenda item for your consideration is a review of request for proposal number nine-dash-two-zero-two-three-zero-eight-five-four for audit services. The school division is required to have an independent review of its financial records annually, and our contract for audit services expired with the completion of the fiscal year 2022 audit. A joint request for proposals with James City County was issued on February fifteenth with responses due on March sixteenth. Once the review committee has completed their process, we will bring this item back for award of a contract, and I anticipate that happening in April. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I apologize, but one question I have is, um, should we be seeing the RFP in executive content here?
I can get that added for you.
Okay. Appreciate it.
It's all done electronically through the county, so I can get a link for it.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else for Ms. Ewen? All right. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ewen. Look forward to seeing that. Uh, item seven-two, review amendment to fiscal year twenty-three grants fund budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, Ms. Ewen is going to bring information about adding two different grants to our fund, to our grant funds this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Herron. Yes, this agenda item is to amend our grants budget to reflect additional grants that we've been awarded from the Virginia Department of Education and the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice. The grant from the Virginia Department of Education amounts to one hundred nineteen thousand, seven hundred seventy-eight dollars. It will be used to support the instructional needs of James Clear Middle School to support growth with identified federal indicators. And the grant from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice amounts to fifty-six thousand. It will be used to create digital maps of school floor plans to be used in conjunction with emergency first responders. With the addition of these grants, it will bring our total grant budget for this fiscal year to eighteen million, six hundred four thousand, sixty-four dollars. And we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Yes. Ms. Hummel.
Thanks. For the digital mapping grant, um, I'm assuming someone had to, um, apply for the grant in order to receive it. Just wondered, like-
That's correct.
Like, who did that? Because that's a, that's a nice, a nice addition for us to have that. And I know it took someone work to do it. So I just wondered.
Yeah, we, we were offered the opportunity to apply for the grant from the Virginia Department of Education, and Mr. Kever, I believe, took lead in that one.
Well, thank you, Mr. Kever.
All right. Uh, any other questions as far as this affecting our grants fund budget and the amendment that we might take in our next meeting? Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Ewen. Uh, move on to item seven-three, um, review of invitation for bid for War Hill High School Interior Auxiliary Gym Edition.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, we're bringing back to you a project that was in fiscal year twenty, CIP, which was the auxiliary gym at War Hill High School. If you remember, at that time, we had to take it off, uh, the, out of the process because we didn't have the funds to cover the bids. And this evening, we bring it back again, and Mr. Snipes is going to present the item.
Good evening, School Board Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Herron. Uh, tonight's proposed agenda item for your consideration, uh, is the review of IFB number two-zero-two-three-zero-seven-three-nine, which is the War Hill High School Auxiliary Gym Edition. As Dr. Herron mentioned, this project was approved in the FY twenty CIP and provides for the twelve thousand, two hundred forty-five square foot gymnasium addition at War Hill. The gymnasium will be connected to the existing high school and will also contain a multipurpose room. It is also, it will also be used as a shelter by the county if needed. Uh, A and E services were awarded to HBA back in May of twenty-twenty-one, and we have created a scope of services for this, for this, for this item due to selective demolition, roof, masonry, hardwood flooring, plumbing, the, the general i- the general, uh, I, things that come along with a gym. An invitation for bid was issued on January twentieth, twenty-twenty-three with a, with an initial due date of February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three. However, it was extended until today, which is March seventh, because of an addendum to questions that the, that the architects had. Uh, as, again, this is a placeholder agenda item, and at the time the item was prepared, the bid opening process had not been completed. Again, the FY twenty CIP included eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars for design, which we have used. Uh, some, some of that, which now remains five hundred and twelve thousand dollars still available. And there is a budget that includes three point four million dollars in the FY twenty-two CIP. The year-end spending plan also included one point seven million dollars to, the FY twenty-two year-end spending plan also included one point seven million dollars to add to this three million, four hundred eighty-five thousand, to give us a budget of almost five point two million dollars. The superintendent recommends the school board review the bidding information and be prepared to award the construction of the War Hill, uh, High School Interior Auxiliary Gym at your next meeting on March twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Snipes. Ms. Hummel?
Um, so I was on the board when we first were excited about getting this in the CIP. And so I guess since I know construction costs have gone up and it was all of a sudden out of our budget, what's been taken out of the design in order to rebid?
There was nothing taken out of the design. We, we ha- we have additional funds that were providing the year-end spending plan that we presume will help us cover the additional expenses.
So the orig- so we're going back, we're just going through the RFP process again. But the actual design, there's, you're not going to be losing anything?
No, they're not losing anything. We did not take anything out.
Okay. Thank you.
That wa- that was one of our requests in the end-of-year spending plan to take some of our end-of-year money and add it to that fund so we could wait until now and go out and rebid for construction. If you remember, we had all the detailed pictures and design of the gym already, and nothing has changed in that.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Young?
I mean, so obviously, construction costs elevated, but-
Of course.
You're sure that's enough money that's going to cover the cost of this building?
Well, we can never say we're sure, but the estimators for the architect believe that it will cover enough, and we believe that it will be, we, we do believe it'll be sufficient.
Okay. And af- even after the value-added engineering, uh, it's, nothing changed after they did that process, right?
No, value engineering is still added into this cost.
Okay.
So we will know definitively at the next meeting, uh, Ms. Young, and be able to present, uh, the award if there are sufficient funds.
Ms. Ordigo.
Um, I have a question about something you mentioned about it being used as a shelter for the county where necessary. Is that, like, if there was a storm and-
There was a storm. Um, currently, there are, a couple of our buildings can be used as shelters where, by the county and by the Red Cross. We have an, an agreement with them to do so. And because the county wanted an additional, as a shelter, uh, in the county, War Hill was decided to be that location.
Does, um, would that impact school being able to take place if it was being used as a shelter?
Uh, typically, if it was used as a shelter, um-
School was closed?
School probably would be closed if it was used as a shelter. However, you can, you're, you are able to section off that part of the building from their remaining part of the building, so it doesn't have to have access. You can have separate access.
Does the county contribute anything financially for the, that service?
Uh, and not being funny, the county would say they always contribute financially for our services. But yeah, but yes, they, yeah, but yes, they-
Is there a reason that we, like, doesn't need that?
They did, they did, they did contribute because they asked for an adi- we asked for an additional amount according to just a, um, I wouldn't say regurgium, but, but it wasn't a shelter, so they did contribute.
And emergency services, everybody was involved in that special design for this building so that it could actually serve as a, as an emergency shelter in our community as well. So we're hoping that it'll move forward so that the community will have that as a resource as well.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't, if school was able, say there was a storm and people were displaced, but we could resume school, we wouldn't have to keep the school closed because we were still sheltering people?
We could still move ahead. We don't have it now. We manage with one gym now. This is an auxiliary gym like Lafayette Court. Um, so I'm presuming we could reschedule and re- revamp and keep school moving along because we do it now.
Okay. And the, the gym has a separate entrance. It can be locked down. It has a different alarm system. It has all those different things that it can be used as a shelter if school was in session. But that would, of course, be elicited from the superintendent.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, Ms. Young?
I mean, I'm just thinking, but we don't store any emergency things like cots or anything like that in case there's anywhere. I mean, we, we're, we don't plan in advance for those things and have the school storing things.
No, we do not plan in va- in advance to have carts or anything stored in that nature. It does have a multipurpose room, but we don't plan to store anything in it.
Okay.
Yeah. Generally, if there isn't an emergency, then the emergency service will, will start to come into play, and those will be provided to the shelter if it was ever used as a shelter.
Okay. Thank you.
Great questions. And thank you for the update, Mr. Snipes, and looking forward to, to hearing more at our next meeting. Thank you so much, sir. Um, move on to item seven-four, uh, purchase request for fleet-related tech and software solutions.
Uh, Mr. Snipes will again speak to, to this particular item. If you remember, this was included in this year's budget, and part of it, uh, is being purchased with this year's funds and then a portion in next year's budget as well, Mr. Snipes.
Thank you, Dr. Herron. Again, for your consideration tonight is the review of the purchase request for fleet-related technology and software solutions and the associated budget transfer. Um, that's a long way to say a fleet management system. Um, we are interested in purchasing a fleet management system because our current fleet management system and fleet data is housed on a server that will be at the end of its useful life in October, twenty-twenty-three. Just to give you an example, that, that, that server in that, um, that fleet management system has been in use since two thousand and five. So it, it, our transportation system needs to be upgraded in that manner. The fleet manager, software is vital to manage the vehicles, the equipment, the fuel, and the fleet parts owned by WJCC schools. We plan to, uh, work under a cooperative with Equalist Group under cooperative contract number COG-two-one-two-three-A. The terms of the contract are from nine-one-twenty-one to August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six, and have renewable options through August thirty-first, twenty-thirty-one. The annual maintenance cost of forty-five thousand dollars is included in the FY twenty-four operating budget, and a budget transfer in amount in the amount of seventy-nine thousand, thirty dollars from instructional salaries and benefits is requested in the FY twenty-three to purchase the equipment. The superintendent recommends the school board review the information and be prepared to vote at your March twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three meeting.
Okay. Ms. Hummel, you look like you have something to ask.
Um, the annual maintenance cost of forty-five thousand, um, that we are now going to be building into our budget for the future, do we have an annual maintenance cost right now for the old system?
Yes.
Okay. And do we know how much that is?
Uh, I can get that to you. I don't want to just say that right now because I'm not sure. I, I've heard, but I'm not, I want to be confident when I tell you.
But it's not more than forty-five thousand?
Oh, no. It is way less than, it is way less than forty-five thousand. Way, way less.
Way less. Okay. I just was wondering. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Ms. Young?
But the fleet management system isn't the routing system that the, the bus routers-
No, it is not the GPS system. This is just a way for us to manage parts, um, oil changes. All the information is that goes with a fleet management system. You want to know how miles is, how ma- how many miles it's been driven. You want to know if the parts are out of warranty. Just all those things.
Ms. Ordigo.
So it's, with an annual cost of forty-five thousand, what, what do we anticipate the, I mean, what is the financial benefit of this updated system in terms of keeping track of all those things? Is there, is there a financial benefit that would outweigh the cost?
I mean, if there's a return on investment for it, um, I couldn't tell you there's a return on investment. If we don't have it, it makes it really difficult to be able to track and to know what our future expenses will be. Um, so it is basically a tracking mechanism to do a, to do our purchasing.
Additionally, the, the current system is, is going to sunset on us because the, we're, we're no longer able to continue to store and repair the, the current computer system that we're utilizing. So I, I think the return on investment is that we'll be able to continue to store and, and keep information and have it at our fingertips versus potentially reverting to an Excel spreadsheet that is on a computer.
So, so we're, we're getting that benefit now with the system we have, but the system is going to just fail and, okay.
We've had it since two thousand and five. It is no longer going to be useful after October, twenty-twenty-three.
It's like your first iPhone.
So this new system is with the same company?
No. No, no, it's not. It is under a cooperative, under a Equalist Group cooperative.
Okay. When, go ahead, Ms. Hummel.
So are the other school systems nearby, is it a, is it a system that is used by lots of school systems?
I don't know if it's used by school systems. I know our county, the county was looking at this current system. They aren't ready to move forward with it yet. Um, our fleet, uh, manager, Billy Estes, has been in contact with them, and they weren't ready to move forward for a number of reasons with their IT department and some other things. But our IT department has reviewed the, what we would need, and it matches what we need. So I can't tell you that another school division is using it, but we do know the county is moving forwards towards it.
And I'm assuming when you guys were looking at this, you were looking at, what is Richmond doing? What is Norfolk doing? What is, like, what are the systems that they're using?
Yeah. You, you do, you, you ask our counterparts in region two what, what systems they're using. Um, but again, because the county was moving forward with this, um, we moved forward with the county because it would just match what they were doing.
And then they didn't do it.
If the county didn't do it, it still wouldn't affect what we would do. Billy Estes still felt this was the best system.
It is a lot of money to add to our budget. That's all. I'm just-
Well, it's already been, it already been bid under a cooperative. That's, that's why, that's why we went with this as well.
Okay.
It's already been bid as a cooperative.
We've been under this cooperative structure since twenty-twenty-one?
No, we have not. This is a, this is, we were going with this company. We have this, the, the current fleet management system, which is Tom's, will sunset in October, twenty-twenty-three, so this will be a new system.
I apologize. I just feel like I'm missing something probably very obvious to everybody else. But as I look at the Cooperative Council of Governments entered into as of first of September, twenty-twenty-one.
That's a, that's the group that entered into that. We were, that's the group that went out to get the bid for anyone that wanted to, um, partake in it. So no, we were not part of that.
We were not. Okay.
But we can join it as a part of it.
Yeah. So what happens is, uh, the, this company, because the, the cooperative contract we're buying into, someone before us has done the RFP process, and now they're part of, we could act, be added to their bid and get that same price as they're getting in a cooperative contract because they've gone through the actual process for us.
And that term just lets you know that it is, it is valid until Au- August thirty-first of twenty-twenty-six. And at that time, if we decide to continue to renew, we can renew for one-year renewals out until the thirty-first of twenty-thirty-one.
I see.
Ms. Ewen, is there anything else we should add about cooperative contracts? Okay. So we do that very often. If there's a cooperative contract, the bidding process and the competitive piece has already taken place. And if we have an opportunity to do that, we don't have to go through the RFP process because we can actually tag on to a cooperative contract already in existence. Some of those are state and some of them are not.
Kind of like what you were discussing last board meeting with your TIPS contract.
Right. Is it like jumping on a class action suit or something?
Like this one better.
It's just the, the only way I can do it.
Yeah. A little bit like that.
Has, uh, Mr. Snipes satisfied everybody's curiosities? Yeah? Thank you, Mr. Snipes. I appreciate it. And we'll move on to seven-five, review AP statistics, textbook selection and adoption. Dr. Herron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Ford is here to present, um, another, uh, textbook selection and adopt, adoption process that is about to get underway. Thank you, Ms. Ford.
Yes. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Herron. This afternoon, I am presenting the proposed project plan for the selection and adoption of textbooks and textbook resources for the AP Statistics Course. Pending your approval, we anticipate beginning the work later this month. The project plan includes three essential items: the timeline for the review of the selected textbooks, the evaluation criteria, and the stakeholder roles represented in the review committee. Throughout the four-week review period, textbooks under consideration will be available at every high school for staff review, and the resources that are provided by the publishers in digital format will be available on our division's website. We will host an evening textbook fair for the community, and the textbooks will be available in the central office during business hours for onsite review once the review process begins. All stakeholders will have an opportunity to provide feedback to the review committee, and the committee will consider all feedback prior to making its textbook recommendation, which will be shared with the school board in May. At this time, I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Ms. Ford? Ms. Hummel?
I am just always the first one to ask the questions.
You're great. Hey, thank you.
Um, how old is this stats, the current stats textbook? I'm assuming, you know, stats don't change that much, so I'm assuming it's probably really old.
It was adopted in two thousand and eight.
Two thousand and eight. Okay. Okay. And then, I'm assuming you just calculate how many you need at the end of all this and how many AP classes and-
We look at our current enrollment, and we also consider the initiatives that we have going forward to encourage more students to take rigorous math courses so that we allow our room, ourselves some room for growth.
Okay. And then I do know that there have been some parents who want to make sure there are hard copies of textbooks, especially math textbooks. So I'm assuming all of these ones that are being reviewed are going to be hard copies, maybe with a digital option or?
Most textbooks have a hard copy, um, option with the digital edition as well. And when you are considering college-level course textbooks, then you're looking at additional, the potential for supplemental materials to come along with it.
Okay. And then, I'm assuming the department, Virginia Department of Ed has given us the-
AP courses, um, for AP courses, um, the Department of Education does not provide an approved textbook list.
Okay.
What we start with is looking at the college board's list of approved textbooks. In order for a student to receive credit, um, for an AP course, they have, the course has to rely on, um, a, an approved textbook, approved by a college board.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Young?
I just want to know, who's our school board representative this week?
I was just about to thank Ms. Donner for volunteering for that, to represent us on, uh, this textbook's ad- adoption. So thank you, Ms. Donner.
Yes, I've looked at textbooks, um, for stats. It was longer than two thousand and eight, so, so this will be new information for me too, but yes.
I just knew I didn't wanna do it. So thank you, Ms. Donner.
Nothing tells me it's not gonna be as controversial.
No, I think you wanna start me on.
I feel like you've got a a strong um mind. You're you're well suited for that field, so thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Ford? Thank you, Ms. Ford. We'll look at item seven-six, adoption, uh review adoption recommendation and purchase request for eighth-grade civics and economics textbooks. Ms. Ford?
Good afternoon again, Mr. Chair, members of the board and Dr. Heron. This afternoon, I will provide you with an overview of the social studies textbook and textbook materials adoption processes and provide a recommendation from the adoption committee for the acquisition of textbook materials for the eighth-grade civics and economics course. The adoption of instructional materials aligns with goals one and two of the WJCC strategic plan. Having instructional materials that support twenty-first century learning and Virginia's profile of graduate ensures that our students and teachers have the appropriate resources aligned with Virginia's standards of learning and WJCC curriculum to develop knowledge and skills in civics and economics that prepare our students for informed participation in shaping our nation's future. Having these instructional materials also allows for equitable access to resources and materials that promote the success for all students. The Virginia Department of Education provided, provides a list of three approved textbooks for civics and economics. The publishers of each of these books provided us with copies of their books and access to their digital platforms and electronic versions of their textbooks. Copies of the books were made available to the public to view at the school board office for four weeks and at an evening adoption fair held at James Blair Middle School on January thirty-first. The community was also provided access to the the digital platforms and electronic textbooks through the division's website for four weeks. A committee representing a variety of stakeholders reviewed the textbooks and materials provided by each publisher. We are very appreciative of all of the work of the committee members and their colleagues. In addition, I would like to thank Ms. Sandra Young for serving on the committee as our school board representative. Committee members and the community were asked to evaluate the textbooks and textbook materials using nine criteria. Evaluation responses were collected using a Microsoft forms from January twenty-third through February seventeenth. Reviewers were not required to respond to criteria if they wished to bypass those survey questions. The committee met on February twenty-third to discuss reviewer feedback and each of the three textbooks. The committee discussion focused on the strengths and opportunities of each book. And based on this discussion, they were able to make a final selection. The civics and economics textbook review committee recommends that WJCC adopt Our State Nation Civics and Economics, the second edition, published by Five Ponds Press. The textbook review committee's rationale for selecting the Five Ponds textbook includes the text's overall comprehensive and engaging nature, its accessibility for all students, close alignment to the standards of learning, its ability to integrate with other commonly-used supplementary res- resources, and the ease of its digital platform to support students, parents, and staff. Following school board approval, we will process the order for the textbooks and plan for the support our teachers will receive prior to the next school year to fully implement the textbook and textbook materials. In closing, I would like to commend Mrs. Leanne Chisenhall, our K- twelve social studies coordinator, for leading an exceptionally well-organized and comprehensive textbook review process. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yes, Miss Orga.
Um, curious, was if the um evening textbook fair was well-attended or attended at all? And also, if there was online, was was the link sent out with online review, review? Was there feedback from any of that?
We had two um members of our community uh attend the textbook fair on January thirty-first. And then of the community forums that were submitted, which of which there were sixty-one, ten identified themselves as community members. We had one respondent identify themselves as a WJCC student. Twenty-two identified themselves as social studies teachers in our division and twenty-eight identified as other staff members in WJCC.
I just have one question. I know Sandy's name wasn't typed at the bottom. Is there a reason for that or? Um, on the one sheet, it had everybody's name for, and it's just said school board, but it didn't have her name, but is it gonna be added or?
Just in oversight.
Okay.
We will definitely add that, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Miss uh Hall.
So the the textbook came out January first, twenty seventeen. Is there, I mean, that's six years old already. Is that? Do do you know whether they plan on having like a more updated version? I feel, I feel like, gosh, if we we approve this and the next year they come out with a twenty-twenty-four version, I'd feel like, darn, we've got a six-year-old textbook.
Currently, uh the standards of learning for social studies are under review for Virginia.
Okay.
And should there be substantial changes that require Five Ponds Press to issue or publish another book, we will be be provided access to the digital copy at no expense and have the opportunity to purchase hard copies at a reduced rate.
Miss Young served on that committee. I wanna say thank you, Miss Young, for for your service there. Did you wanna add to that?
Uh, well, first of all, I agree with totally with uh with Robin about Leanne Chisenhall. That was an exceptionally well-run uh committee. It was, it was you can never see those are fun, but I mean, I, the fact that our time wasn't wasted at all, I thought that was amazing. And and the Five Ponds Press, which I, um, she talked about, is a Virginia company. So I think, and so they have, I I I think the committee felt like they had more the the feel of what was going on in Virginia, especially since they're they're adopting new standards, so. Book is very readable. It was, it's like reading a magazine. It's a really great book, so.
Young, Dr. Beers?
Yeah, um, I I'm I'm curious, I've actually fallen up with something somebody else said. Is uh, that is a pretty old copyright date. And knowing how these textbooks are um are written up and put together, they didn't, they started this, uh, they probably were pretty close to two thousand fifteen when it was actually done. That's nine years. So I'm looking at the date and realize the last seven years, it's not gonna be discussed in this book at all, is it?
Then, no, sir. Not, not as it is currently published.
I'm just curious, were there, were there textbooks that had um uh more recent copyright dates?
We considered the three textbooks that are on the VDOE's approved textbook list.
So those are the only ones you looked at? You didn't look at any other ones?
That's correct.
Cuz you have the right to do that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Were those also older?
The textbook list on the VDOE's website was last updated on, in two thousand eighteen.
Okay.
Miss Orga.
Do we, do we know when, when the updates to the, is it the SOLs? Yeah, or the standards of, when they are expected?
They're going through a public review process right now, and I believe that they are projected to make a final decision, decision hopefully later this spring.
What what would be the harm of waiting six months?
At this point, we're we're trying to use the funds that are available to us this school year.
Wanted to try to get involved with the textbook, thanks.
Ms. Donner?
That was my question.
Okay. Okay. All right. Any other, go ahead.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
And those funds have to be ex- used by, which day, June thirtieth?
We have, we have to have the textbooks onsite by June thirtieth.
I can I, just one more.
Sorry. Are you satisfied there?
Um, will there be, uh, any other kind of supplemental material that will cover um civics and economics beyond, you know, in a more recent stretch? They have resource material, that sort of thing?
One of the uh more commonly-used supplementary instructional materials is Newsela, which is a source that provides um short pieces of text for students around a variety of topics. It's um used quite heavily in both our English and our social studies courses because it provide, it supports that instruction. And then again, of course, if there are revisions to the Five Ponds textbook, we will have immediate access to the updated digital version.
So my follow-on question to that is, that's a great another. We've got access, immediate access to the digital. Um, if there are um needs for the print copies, we get a reduced rate. Can you, can you tell us about that reduced rate that would be expected to?
The reduced rate is at fifty percent of the original cost. The other consideration that Mrs. Chisenhall has made is looking at the crosswalk between the um current SOLs and the new SOLs. And there, the the changes are minor in detail. There are there's information added to the new standards that can be addressed through the supplemental materials. And it, they don't require an updated textbook. Because that was one of the questions that we had is, how do we respond to the standards changing?
And just one more, if I may, how how widely used are uh print textbooks for civics, for example? Would you say, eighth grade?
That's going to depend on the teacher and how, whether or not they are balancing, they're relying more heavily on the textbook itself. If they feel like they have a textbook that supports the standards of learning, which these do, or um bringing in some of the supplementary materials such as Newsela.
Okay, but we don't really know who's using what, who's relying more on digital versus.
We can't tell you to the extent at which they use the textbook in their courses.
Miss Orga?
Just massive labor, but if, so if the standards change in in the spring significantly and we get this immediate access, but how long does it take to create the new material that we would have immediate access to?
Yeah, I can't tell you. I I can't, I don't know how long the, what the turnaround time for the for Five Ponds would be in producing a new textbook. But again, in considering that, we looked at the crosswalk for the standards and felt that these were not standards that were subject to substantial changes in content, in the content of the standards.
Ms. Donner?
Uh, for this purchase, what's the split between the cost of the digital version and then how many text, physical textbooks worth? Probably even buying.
I do have that information for you. Um, right now, we are planning to order eight hundred seventy textbooks and the cost per book is fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents. And with that, we have access to the student ebooks and the digital resources for free for seven years.
Any other questions for Ms. Ford?
They're on Amazon for eleven dollars.
They're on Amazon for eleven dollars? Interesting. Okay. All right, I think uh, I thi- I think we've beat this one pretty well. We'll uh, we'll see what uh comes of our next meeting. And if there are any questions, follow-on questions that we have, please do get those to Dr. Heron. Uh, and I'm sure that we'll, we'll be able to get some answers before our next meeting. Okay? All right, thank you, Ms. Ford. Oh, Dr. Beers, you had?
No, just a, um, uh, is it possible to to take a look at at the, at this particular textbook? Just out of curiosity.
Sure, we can absolutely provide it to you, yeah.
We've done that before. You just go in and.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. I think in prior years, uh, with the end-of-year spending plan, we could have delayed and bought it after July one. But there's no longer an end-of-year spending plan. If you recall, that's goes, has got, went away last year. So we don't have the, some of the same options to buy textbooks with end-of-year money after June thirtieth.
But I thought that was an issue last year, too. We were thinking about delaying purchase and this answer was we couldn't use the money after. That was the reason we had to do it.
Yes, that that would also apply if you want to be before June, before we do the end-of-year plan. But normally, we could go after and create with end-of-year funds left over. We then could go to the Board of Supervisors and the City Council with an end-of-year spending plan. And so that could be done in the next school year because we would give the money back and they would give it back to us again to use for that purpose. But that no longer exists as of last year because it goes into the CIP and only if there's very exceptional circumstance could we do some kind of a plan. Isn't that correct, Ms. Yuen?
Yes, that's correct.
Miss Orga, you got another question?
Yeah.
No, just the, I don't, I don't recall that being an option last year. It's a moot point, but just.
Well, like I said, any further questions, comments that you might have regarding purchasing or amounts or numbers of books? Um, please do get those to Dr. Heron before, well before our next meeting so we can be sure we know what our next meeting calls for. All right, um, item seven-seven, review the special ed education annual plan, twenty-three, twenty-four, and the title Six B flow-through funds.
Mr. Chair, this evening, Dr. Bryan's going to present um the annual special education plan. We bring this to you at this time every year and also the use of Title Six B flow-through funds that support in part that special education annual plan. Dr. Bryan.
Good afternoon, School Board Chair Dell, members of the board and Dr. Heron. It is a pleasure to come before to you to review the proposed local special education annual plan. And board docs, you should have a copy of the application and report from the VDOE. And this presentation will provide a brief overview of the provisions contained within.
Let's quit.
Yeah.
Any questions?
I don't have any.
The fastest that's ever gone. I think we have something wrong with the template by the looks of things, so.
Almost there. I said everything's in the cloud these days.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Things go faster than the cloud.
We think we're getting close.
Okay. A reset.
Hey, uh, the special education annual plan is a regulatory requirement under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, or IDEA, of two thousand four and serves as a formal agreement between local school boards and the VDOE. It provides the provisions of special education and related services to students with disabilities. And each component of this plan must be approved in order to receive these federal funds. As required by these guidelines, the plan has been shared with members of the SEAC Committee on February ninth, two thousand twenty-three. The federal funds provided to local education agencies under this plan may only be used to pay the cost of providing special education and related services to students with disabilities. In Williamsburg, James City County, these funds are used solely for special education personnel funding. There are two separate and distinct funding streams referred to as subgrants in the special education annual plan. Section six-eleven is applicable to school-aged children with disabilities in grades K through twelve. Section six-nineteen applies solely to preschool-age students with disabilities. While there are different amounts allocated to each section, the total amount of these federal funds allocated to school divisions is formula-driven and takes into consideration historical federal funding, total school enrollment, and poverty level. At this time, new allocation amounts have not been released. In light of the fact that the new allocation amounts have yet to be released for fiscal year twenty-four, the twenty-three, twenty-four Special Education Annual Plan is based on the amounts awarded in two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three. That amount allocated to six, section six eleven, which applies to school-aged children's grades K twelve, is two million, three hundred, twelve thousand, eight hundred sixty-seven dollars. As outlined in page twelve in the application, section six eleven subgrant identifies the special education personnel whose salary and benefits will be paid with these specific funds. I think it's important to note that three teachers from this fund had to be moved into our operating budget due to the flat uh funding from IDEA. Uh, in addition to the eighteen special education teachers, there are three spe- speech-language pathologists, five special education paraprofessionals, one part-time parent resource coordinator, and point two of a salary for a full-time K eight literacy coordinator. As found on page fifteen in the application, section six nineteen subgrant is significantly smaller at thirty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and is used to cover a portion of a nurse's salary serving preschool students with disabilities in the Bright Beginnings program. As you've seen in your review of the application, there are various required components contained within. While some are straightforward, I'd like to talk in greater detail about a few of the more substantial provisions in this application and report for the twenty-three, twenty-four award year. Page eight of the application requires a report on the implementation of the twenty-two, twenty-three annual plan. As you see, it's noted that all federal money allocated in the annual plan for twenty-two, twenty-three was utilized for the salary and benefits of a special education personnel. Historically, our division has used these funds for special education personnel and that continues to be what is proposed in the twenty-three, twenty-four annual plan. This formal agreement ensures that the division adheres to regulations governing special education programs established under IDEA. The Department of Special Education and all WJCC staff play a role in ensuring that the following statement of assurances are implemented throughout the calendar year. The next noteworthy provision is the maintenance of effort information, which can be found on page nine of the application. The federal regulation requires divisions to budget in subsequent years at least the same amount that is actually spent for education of students with disabilities in the most recent or preceding fiscal year. It includes costs above and beyond those required to provide regular education programs for non-disabled students. There are four tests to determine that the division is in compliance. Those are local dollars, local plus state dollars, local per capita amount of dollars, or local plus state per capita amount of dollars. The amounts listed here are projections based on the division's twenty-three, twenty-four preliminary budget and were provided from our finance department. A quick comparison of the MOE calculations for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year against the projections for the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year suggests that we will meet the means tests in all four categories by spending more in a subsequent year. The federal child, child find regulations require local school divisions to identify, locate, evaluate, and provide services to children who reside in our locality who are in need of special education and related services. That obligation also extends to children who attend private schools and our homeschool within the geographic boundary of our locality. The proportionate set-aside amount, which is addressed on page ten of the application, states that the local education agency must spend a proportionate amount of federal funds on providing special education and related services to permanently placed private school and homeschool students with disabilities. There are seventy-one students who have been identified as having disabilities and are permanently placed in private schools or homeschools. This is a decrease of eighteen students from the twenty-one, twenty-two school year and the average allocation per eligible student is one thousand, two hundred, twenty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents. The total proportionate set-aside amount is eighty-seven thousand, uh, forty-four dollars and forty cents. This is a decrease, total decrease of sixteen thousand, four hundred and one dollars from the previous year. Accordingly, as noted in this section, these set-aside funds are used to cover a portion of the salaries and benefits, primarily of speech-language pathologists who provide services to these particular students. The proportionate set-aside amount is part of the total section six eleven subgrant allocation. WJCC continues to provide special education programming that is student-centered, inclusive, and aimed towards student achievement for students with disabilities. The following provides an overview of our students with disabilities population that was submitted for our December one count. This equates to sixteen point nine percent of our overall student population. Following your approval, the application will be submitted to the VDOE by the due date of May twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. We can expect to receive preliminary award amounts by July and the final award amounts are typically released by October. Once approved, this plan takes effect, uh, takes effect, excuse me, July first, two thousand twenty-three and runs for twenty-seven months. All alloc- allocated funds, which are dispersed twice a year in July and October. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Uh, Ms. Donner?
Um, I was just, this is just for my information, but how are students that are in um private school and homeschool identified for that uh set-aside?
So each year, we do a yearly consultation meeting with the local private schools and establish kind of a, an agreement on how we support them through child finds. If they have a uh, a s- parent that comes forward into their school and says, I think my child may have a disability, or I would like to question this further, we work with our schools and our staff to work with them, go through eligibility, and if necessary, develop something called an ISP, which is an individualized service plan, which provides services in their current setting. It's not as extensive as an IEP, but it does identify what type of services will be provided by our division.
And so do they get the twelve hundred dollars worth of our services, or how does that money work?
Yeah, so uh, every month, we, we have how services are being delivered, we monitor how we spend that. Um, without having the exact numbers, we exhaust those funds each year.
Ms. Donner?
And then similarly, how, how do you find the homeschool kids?
The same thing, they can, we have child find awareness that we push out there, they can also, uh, uh, excuse me, contact their local zone school, we can work with the, the homeschool parents as well.
Ms. Hall?
On, on your slide, a couple slides back where you have all the, the listing of all the different disabilities and the number of students, does that include just, is it just K through twelve, or does that include the preschoolers as well?
That includes preschool as well.
And so that's the entire, and then preschool is, is it two years now? Is that, what's the age cutoff?
Typically, it's three to twenty-two.
Three, three, okay, so three.
And you'll see primarily the developmental uh disability is typically assigned during the Bright Beginnings and then by age seven, they will exit from uh what we call DD into another category.
All right, and then on this list right here, are there children that fall within multiple areas, so they can be speech and language impaired and emotionally disabled and...
Yes, ma'am. So the, the count that you see in front of you is just the primary disability, but there are multiple students who may have a secondary tertiary disability that's not uh captured in this, this chart.
Oh, okay, so this is not double counting, it's their primary disability?
Yes, ma'am.
For three through?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, okay, thanks.
Go ahead, Ms. Orego.
With hearing impairment, that often is, you know, speech and language impairment would be also the same, you know, also prevalent, and that's not, that's not overlapping at all in this?
It's not. So the primary disability is determining what's the disability is impacting uh access to the general curriculum the most, and so the IEP, or the eligibility team will determine what is the primary and secondary. So uh, the count where we pulled this from was from our December first count, so we go through all IEPs, all eligibility's and determine what, what have they decided is the actual primary disability, so.
Any other questions for Dr. Brown before we take this up in our next meeting? Uh, thank you so much for all the information. There's a lot that you've brought together for our consideration, I appreciate it, Dr. Brown.
Thank you.
Um, I think you're here for the next one.
Hopefully, the presentation is...
All right, so we're gonna move on to our uh information discussion items. Uh, eight, one is Special Education Self-Assessment Audit. This is a, a new audit, I believe.
Yep, I'll just pass right to Dr. Brown again, thank you.
All right. So uh, good afternoon again, uh Chairman Dow, members of the board and Dr. Heron. It is a pleasure to come forth to, before you to provide information on the results of the Virginia Inclusive Audit that was conducted by WJCC and the Department of Special Education. There we go. To provide you with information on how the inclusive audit was conducted within Williamsburg James City Schools, it is important to share how this audit originated. In twenty eighteen, the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Commission, or JLRK, formed a subcommittee to review K twelve special education services across the Commonwealth. The findings from this work, as well as recommendations, are contained within the JLRK report, which is dated December fourteenth of two thousand twenty. Of the twenty-seven recommendations that were provided from this report, recommendation eighteen asks that the General Assembly consider requiring localities to complete a self-assessment audit on inclusive practices once every three years. In response to that action taken by General Assembly from this recommendation, the VDOE released guidance on the responsibilities for each locality and how the results must be reported. The results are to be reported to the division superintendent, special education director, chairs of the local SEAC and school board, and the VDOE. In addition to this requirement, WJCC believed that sharing the findings through this informational report to the school board allows for increased awareness on the goals that the division has to continue our mission on enhancing current inclusive practices. The audit tool itself contained ten high-quality standards. Each high-quality standard contained multiple sub-standards that helped frame the conversations conducted throughout the audit process. The following is an example of one of the ten high-quality standards, Standard F Staffing and Scheduling. Within this standard of staffing and scheduling, substandard F one lists a specific practice that required schools to assign a rating of in-place and successful, must be improved or not in place. Ratings were assigned by school-based teams after a review of the standard, analysis of applicable data, and reaching consensus from each school's audit team. Divisions in Virginia were required to assign ratings to each high-quality standard that self-assessed their current performance across the division. Divisions were allowed to determine the manner in which they collected the data necessary to assign a rating. WJCC determined that in order to assign a division-level rating, it was necessary to complete the audit alongside each school. This would provide the best understanding of overall needs, specific supports, and next steps for the division individual, individual schools. Almost all campuses, including Bright Beginnings, have completed the audit. Members from the Department of Special Education partnered, partnered with schools to help engage in productive conversations about the steps needed to support them in promoting an inclusive environment. Schools were encouraged to bring individuals to the table that had varied experiences and input. Overall, there were themes that were identified as strengths for WJCC. First, each school spoke about how their goal was to promote inclusive environments for all students within their building. There is a desire to strengthen their existing practices and were open to additional trainings and support to meet their goals. Next, schools identified overall administrative support for staff and students with disabilities that they served. It was reported that administrators often sought ways to increase collaborative opportunities and support teachers in overall programming to meet the needs of its students. Schools spoke about how they sought to assign classroom locations that did not exclude classrooms serving students with disabilities. However, they did highlight that these decisions can be impacted by factors such as mobility and access needs for students. At the elementary level, schools discussed that the mindset of our teachers to provide best-practice instruction and opportunities for collaborative structures were strong for both general and special education teachers. The commitment and drive of WJCC staff to serve all students resonated across conversations across all levels. At the secondary level, schools spoke to act, or the, to the ability to access relevant text, curriculum, and the resources to meet the needs of students at their current performance Findings also suggest areas of need that WJCC should deem a priority moving forward. Across multiple elementary campuses, the request for additional staffing was listed as a priority. WJCC adheres to the points and projections model based on the VDOE state regulations for special education programming. However, schools did note that the points and projections model does not always accurately capture the commitment that is required from staff to meet the student needs on a daily basis. Our initial response to this need is to conduct an analysis of service delivery minutes to determine if additional guidance and support of efforts to deliver services can be better streamlined to help alleviate the identified constraints that the schools are reporting. This analysis will be completed throughout the remainder of the school year and official guidance will be provided to each school in preparation for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Schools also identify the need to continue their involvement and development of tier-two and tier-three supports for all students, including those with disabilities. Existing measures with school-based MTSS teams and their yearly tiered fidelity inventory measurements will help monitor overall progress in this area. The need to examine master scheduling with inclusive practices in mind was noted. Master schedules requested additional guidance and support. Recently, the Department of Special Education attended the William and Mary T-TAC Inclusive Master Scheduling Workshop to receive additional resources and guidance. This collaborative experience with William and Mary T-TAC helped, will help support WJCC master schedules in an upcoming workshop in May. During this workshop, with ongoing support throughout the summer, WJCC strives to ensure that schedules provide not only increased opportunities for students with disabilities throughout the school day, but also increased time for planning and collaboration between general and special education staff. Also, across most campuses, the need to provide increased training for general education teachers and paraprofessionals was recognized. In many conversations that I've had with general education teachers and paraprofessionals throughout this audit, there's been a request for specialized training to ensure that personnel uh can adequately serve students in their settings, ensure their understandings of components of the IEP, uh, their role within IEP meetings, understanding the nature of disabilities, and understanding of service delivery requirements that are met through enhanced and targeted professional learning opportunities. Findings suggest that there was also a need to increase support and awareness of special education process for families. While schools identified ways in which schools, they work with families throughout the IP process, increased opportunities to provide parents with awareness and support of the special education process was necessary. It was also identified from the findings that a formal peer mentorship model would be implemented across the division. While there were some schools who developed elements of a peer mentorship model, the need to implement a system-wide model is needed. In a discussion with SEAC, they discussed their support and partnership in the research and support of this implementation. The Department of Special Education on January twenty-eighth took an initial step in creating support for families with disabilities within WJCC. They hosted the VDOE in a workshop titled Critical Decision Points. This workshop overviewed ten critical points that parents should consider throughout the special education process. Attended by nearly fifty families, vendors from William and Mary T-TAC, DARs, and the local libraries were there and worked alongside families as well. Childcare was made possible by members of Student Services and Special Education along with student volunteers from local, our, our three local high schools in an effort to allow additional families to attend this event. While we are required to complete this audit once every three years, WJCC seeks to use these findings from this audit to ensure that it remains an active dialogue within our schools. At this time, we are working on setting specific criteria within the audit to help with considerations for each standard and ensure that schools can assess their progress accurately through the use of a supplemental rubric that we are developing. During our twenty, our January twelfth SEAC meeting, members from SEAC completed a structured walkthrough of our findings and provided input, input and feedback that was captured through a reporting form. They also talked about ways in which SEAC can support our division's continued enhancement of inclusive prac, inclusive practices. Inclusive practices is a division-wide effort that encompasses all stakeholders within WJCC. I would like to thank all members who assisted in the delivery, completion, and analysis of this audit, and at this time, I can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Thank you, Dr. Brown. Uh, did I see Ms. Orego yet? No, okay. Ms. Yuen?
I'm, I just have a question, I don't know if it's specific to this report, it might have been specific to the one prior to this, is that okay if I ask that?
Absolutely.
Um, one of the things I noticed in, on one of the slides, it talked about that that WJCC provides special education services to students that are in jail. Do, but we are also responsible, I mean, isn't the school division also responsible for providing special, for providing education services to the general, to general education students, right? Or am I missing something there?
They are, I can speak to the special ed component. Any students where we are serving as the LEA, we provide uh with support for where they're placed, services through the IEP team. And that also goes for the Peninsula Regional Jail for individuals who are eighteen to twenty-two, we work with uh locating individuals who do have disabilities and providing them support as well.
Okay.
But I got, one of our most challenging pieces right now is, you know, with the shortage of staff, trying to meet all of these expectations, both within the school division and outside our school division as well. It, it's quite a challenge and we are managing to do it very well.
Other questions for Dr. Brown while we have them? I, I, the Special Education Parent Newsletter intrigues me, we don't have anything like that just yet, is that accurate to say?
Uh, yes, so we uh, in discussions with SEAC, we were looking at efficient ways to get communication resources beyond our website and beyond, um, there was at one point a Facebook group through SEAC, uh, through discussion with, with SEAC and our parent resource coordinator, uh, on Thursday, we're actually putting together a draft parent newsletter that will be sent to all parents of students with disabilities, would include SEAC information, upcoming resources, community, community events that would be helpful for those families. Um, and that's just kind of a... Um, and that's just kind of a, see how it goes and see if we get a good response from it.
And then, I appreciate that. And then, in another place, you talked about, I don't exactly see it here, but providing, I guess, knowledge or, or critical thinking points within the school for staff and faculty is a newsletter. Something that's going to be used in, in that respect as well, or?
Hey, can't, we do have weekly updates that we do send out that provide that information. Anytime that anything's pertinent to all staff, we will provide that. But we are looking at and discussion with, as recent as yesterday, with general education teachers, different ways to, to raise awareness and ensure that they are aware of the ongoing updates to special ed practices.
Just to continue to drill in how important inclusion is.
Absolutely.
And, right, so, that's great. I, I'm, I'm encouraged by this. Thank you so much. Any, any last questions for Dr. Brown while we have him? All right. Thank you, Dr. Brown.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We'll move on to item eight two, our discussion on our Dr. Heron's Superintendent's Operating Budget, Recommended Budget for twenty-three, twenty-four. I don't believe Dr. Heron has anything further to share with us this evening?
No, sir.
All right. So now, the Superintendent's Recommended Budget is in our hands as we discuss, discuss the recommended budget in preparation for our joint meeting on the seventeenth and our follow-on meeting, I believe, on the twenty-fourth. Is that right? Twenty-fourth, okay.
Twenty, twenty-first.
Twenty-first, okay. Anybody like to lead us off? Your thoughts on Dr. Heron's recommended budget?
I have to read my statement.
Oh, yes, thank you.
And I authenticate it now. As a member of the School Board of Williamsburg, James City County, I acknowledge that I may have an interest in the fiscal year twenty-three school budget because my husband is an employee of the WJCC schools. However, I believe that I am able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the budget fairly objectively and in the public interest.
Thank you, Ms. Sunley. So I, rather than just kind of taking the opportunity myself, just wanted to open up to the board to see what your thoughts have been as we've gone through this process, getting Dr. Heron's Recommended Budget up to this point, uh, this point last two weeks, in fact. Anybody want to lead us off? Well, I would just say that I've appreciated on this side of it, taking in the information, seeing all the work that's gone into preparing a budget, a budget of need, and that's exactly what we had in our first January meeting. Uh, as we began looking forward to this moment, identifying the budget need for our school year twenty-three, twenty-four, and then greatly appreciating the speed with which Dr. Heron and, and her senior leadership team went to look at areas that we could potentially put on hold, push that pause button, though they are needs. We saw a budget of need at the outset. But are they critical needs that we could potentially, or, or are they not critical needs that we potentially put that pause button on and say that we could wait a cycle or two? And so we saw that, I think, to the tune of our, our anticipated shortfall became, I think sixteen down to nine. My recollection, recollection serves me well. And that was done with, I think, in my view, three real priorities. Not affecting or hindering instruction. Those, those things that we, Dr. Heron pushed the pause button on do not affect instruction in the least that I recall. They were safety-minded. Uh, we were still, um, we see a, a budget that drives to the point of what Major Fincher's and his, the outside, the outside assessment, safety assessment, brought to, brought to us that we've also shared with the funding partners. And so doesn't affect instruction, hadn't affected safety. And by the way, it really highlights just how important faculty and staff retention are to this board, are to Dr. Heron and her senior leadership team. Went from a seven percent salary wage increase last year to a proposed eight percent, what we're looking at in this proposed budget. The big difference as I look at the proposed budget is that last year's or our current budget, seven percent, had a, a thirty-seventy split on the health insurance, thirty percent being paid by the division, seventy percent being paid by the employee. If they, yeah, in fact, I think it was twenty-eighty, wasn't it? Am I saying it wrong?
In last year's budget, it was eighty-twenty, and we passed on eighty percent. In the current proposed budget for next year, the division takes on seventy percent, and the employee would pay thirty percent.
Yep, and that's exactly what I'm getting to. So last year versus this year, the employee takes on the greater onus of the insurance costs. And so really kind of chipping into that seven percent that we really labored over to get to, to offer our employees, our fantastic employees, by the way. And then this year, eight percent with that insurance cost turned upside down. So we're taking the greater onus of that insurance cost, which I think is fantastic. We were able to offer, if we adopt this budget, more of that eight percent to our, our basic, fantastic faculty and staff. So with that, I do want to open up to discussion points. Ms. Ortego?
Yeah, I just want to, I have a clarifying question specifically about the insurance piece because in my recollection, and then also in this, in the, the line item here, or the, the, the line in the expenditure increases on page nine. It says that increase in healthcare costs based on the cost-sharing ratio of WJCC thirty percent, employee seventy percent of the nine point nine percent increase. So are we changing the whole healthcare structure, or, or is that just how we divvied up the nine point nine percent increase? Cause that was, I actually remembered that from conversations, and I think there's some confusion about whether we're changing the whole structure or just that increase.
That's a typo. I'll get that fixed. It is a nine point nine percent increase in our health insurance, and that nine point nine percent increase, we're sharing seventy percent WJCC and thirty percent passed on to employees.
For the increase?
Of the increase.
Of the increase.
Just the increase. I mean, it depends on what plan you're on, what percentage an employee pays versus WJCC.
That's different than what, I don't know. I just feel like I'm hearing it talked about in two different ways, and I.
Go ahead.
You know what I'm doing? We're not changing the eight, so the eighty-twenty structure is staying the same for the majority of it, and, and just for this increase, we're changing it to seventy-thirty. Is that correct?
No, so last year, I don't recall what the increase was. I want to say it was six point one. So of that six point one percent for this current fiscal year, we shared that increased cost between employees. We passed on eighty percent of it, and WJCC took on twenty percent.
Of the total cost or the increase?
Of the increase cost. So we calculate the increased cost for each plan, and whatever the increase is, we took on twenty percent and we passed on eighty percent. And the calculations are done on the K five hundred plan to determine what we pay because we pay, regardless of what plan an employee chooses, we pay the same amount. So employees, if they choose the K two fifty plan, they pay a premium to take that plan on.
Does that answer your question?
Not really, but it's probably me.
So, so we could all, so there's two different things. There's the percentage of the increase both years, but then there's also taking all of the numbers together, how much, what percentage do we pay of the total plan? And maybe that's where we're getting confused, and we can get those numbers to you. So ignore the increase for now. If you want to know what the employee pays overall and what the employer pays overall, we can get you that for the last, for this year and for next year as well, which is different.
You're right.
It's a different percentage again. So we can, we can get that for you.
Yeah, okay.
Does that, is that what you're, maybe that's what's being, that's probably what we're confusing, I think.
But I, but I, yeah, I think we should know that total.
Sure.
Because I think some people are under a, a, a wrong impression.
So what you had been taking in was that the, the entire, the entirety of the cost had been flipped from twenty-eighty to seventy-thirty?
I didn't think that, but I think some people think that. And I, I was saying, no, it's just the increase, and people are telling me like, no, it's the whole thing. I'm like, I don't think so. And so I think it's confusing, and I think that we, and if there's a different overall number, I think that should absolutely be front and center. Cause it's not transparent.
It sounds like we'll have that in our next meeting. We don't have that today?
We don't have that today, but we can provide it at the next meeting.
I think it's a really good point, Sarah. I mean, I was always under the impression it was the percentage of the change. But if someone's confused and then is going to be extremely disappointed to find that that's not the case, we need to be super clear about that.
Yes, I think so.
From my knowledge, though, our board, were we on the same page as far as what the, that figure was, that nine point nine percent?
No. No, I, I, I think, I, I mean, I thought it was seventy-thirty.
For the entirety?
Across the cost, the, the total cost of healthcare. But from what I'm hearing now, it's still eighty-twenty, except for the increase.
Well, it's, it's changed, it, it changes every year as the, the division takes on more or passes on more.
But who makes that decision? The, the board does, correct?
Right, right. And so I, I guess it's knowing what we're talking about. So we're talking about a.
Confused, totally.
Well, we'll have, we'll have, I guess, more transparent information at our next meeting, so we know exactly what the, the final number is. That's the, the pass through.
Mr. Chair of AME, there is no intent to be not, not transparent. I don't want the public to believe that today. But if we, in our conversations with healthcare last year, health insurance, we passed on more to the employee, but we still were looking at the overall percentage we pay for healthcare, which is, I want to say about seventy percent, somewhere in that range. But we could get you an exact figure. We passed on more last year because we wanted to put the emphasis on salary and pass on the healthcare to allow us to do that. We're still doing that a little bit this year.
And so this year, we play a little bit of catch-up with what we had passed on to the employer as we take on the seven percent this year.
Correct. We're not passing on the same amount. Um, I think it was four point nine percent increase last year in, in health insurance.
And, and that chart that was provided to the board, I think, two meetings ago, where it showed that nobody was at red. It showed the different increments. That was of the, the total cost. Is that right? That was of the total cost, not the percentage increase?
Correct. We looked at what, by applying these figures, what the total cost an employee would pay compared to their salary increase.
Right. Okay. Okay. Any other comments on the Superintendent's Recommended Budget?
I, I just wanted some clarification. Uh, one of the things that, Dr. Heron, as you were going through and you were talking about how you had looked at every school and at every cost center and everything, and the schools to look for, for budget cuts, places that we could cut. We, we did not, am I correct in, in, that I heard this correct since apparently my hearing isn't correct? Is that we did not in, we did not increase class size for, for, for the grade levels?
That's correct. We believe we can still hold the current class size with the extra additional staff that we're adding. We are adding additional staff because we've got three hundred more students, but we, you know, with the current class size and the positions where we have in the budget to add, we should be able to keep class size. The unknown factor, we don't know what our increase in, in enrollment will be next year. That's a totally unknown factor right now. So definitively, will that happen in every single class? I can't say that. But based on our current numbers and looking from classroom to classroom, we believe that the number of additional staff members we're adding will keep class size the same. But there is an unknown.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Any others for, any comments on the recommended budget, anything we'd like to see before we potentially take action on this in our March twenty-one meeting? Ms. Donner?
Um, so I know we've had lots of discussion around the teacher salaries and ten percent versus eight percent. And so just for clarity on, we landed at eight percent because we're taking into, into consideration the balance of giving our teachers a substantial increase, adding additional staff in terms of instructional staff and support staff where we think that we need it, and then also trying to balance the healthcare costs as well. And that's how we got to the eight percent.
Yes, I believe so. And also was the discussion of the board to look at the potential percentage increase. When we made the decision on eight percent, we're working off the governor's budget at five percent.
So we are going above, we're, we're taking what we're seeing from the governor's budget, adding on to it, and, and also looking at as we are making that increase, you know, that is, as we said, a budget of need, and as much as we would want to be able to provide a ten percent increase, we're also balancing a, a bunch of different factors, which gets us to the eight percent.
That's true. That's true. But in the original budget, the board looked at the five percent of the governor, governor's budget and wanted to go three percent above that. We don't know where the General Assembly will, will land, and so we're left in a, in a vacuum. It looks like seven percent. Because both the House and the Senate are saying seven percent right now, but we don't have a final statement on that or a final number on that. If they both come through with seven percent, then we will have gone one percent above what they're giving.
Ms. Donner, please.
Sorry. So if I were a teacher and I heard that, that the governor is coming in at seven percent, and so now we're only going one, one above the eight percent, I think as a teacher, I'd ask, well, then how come we can't get the other three percent that gets, or two percent that gets us to ten percent if the governor is going to give us more money?
Yeah, I, I think it's a, it's a good question, but like you've already stated, we're putting some of our ask into bringing a lot of positions from the grant into the operating budget. So we're, we're bringing in extra special education teachers. We're bringing in our math interventionists. Two or three other positions coming from grant funding into the operating budget this year as well. And so we're trying to balance support for teachers in the classroom with salary. And, and also adding a significant, significant number to keep class size where it is now.
Ms. Ortego?
So on the, on the flip side, if the legislature does nothing, which could happen because they don't have to, and we're back at five.
Right.
And we're only going up to, or is this, so this is not based on the legislature at all, so?
This is, we've got to build on the governor's budget because that's the only piece we're starting off right now.
Right, so right now, we're prepared to ask the locality for basically three percent.
Above. That's correct.
Ms. Hummel?
And then it's also important to know what our gap is right now with our funding partners. So we're looking.
Eight million.
Big. Huh?
Big.
It's a hu, it's much bigger than it's ever been in the past. So that's what concerns me, I think, the most, is that even if the governor were to go up to seven percent, that just makes it a little easier for our funding partners to swallow because the gap will be.
Provide some relief.
Provide relief and I, that, it's a, I, I do think everyone needs to know how much of a, it, it is a gap.
Mr. Chair of AME, the, in the Vannial Budget from the county and, and city, I believe the increase that was in the Vannial Budget was one point five percent? Is that correct, Ms. Ewing?
Uh, either that or one point four.
One point four percent, even less, okay. And so we're asking for eight point.
Eight point seven.
Point seven.
Which is down from sixteen.
Right.
Which is down from sixteen where we started in January. I, I applaud the work that's been done up to this point, but you're exactly right, Ms. Hummel. Yeah. Ms. Young?
But, but if we decided, I mean, it's a little late in the budget process, I understand that, but if, if we had wanted to stay with the ten percent, you dropped it down to where we are now, down to, it's about eight million, some odd dollars that we're, we're asking for from the city and the county. But if we had wanted to stay at the ten percent, yes, that would only be one point. I mean, I'm not good at math, but fast in my head. yes, that would only be one point, I mean, I'm not good at math, but fast in my head, but that would only be about one point eight million dollars more, right, for ten percent?
Two point two.
Two point what?
Two point four.
Yeah, it's one point two million for every one percent raise.
Right, okay. But you said our, but just a second, you said our current ask is for eight point seven, right?
Eight point four.
Eight point seven percent is the ask.
That's what I'm talking about. It's only, it's only one point three more. That, I mean, am I doing something wrong here?
Yeah, Ms. Yuen, if you give us a cost of, of additional money, should we ask for the ten percent, the, the actual dollar figure? We would add to the eight point four million.
So we're currently requesting eight point four million, and if we were to increase the salary increase by two percent, it would be approximately an additional two point two million. So we'd be asking for ten point six million from the localities.
The asking, because you're saying that we already have eight point seven percent, or is it eight point four in the budget? Which one do we have in the budget currently?
The superintendent's proposed budget, my proposed budget has, um, an, an ask of eight point four million, which is eight point seven percent.
Eight point seven percent above what our budget is from the localities for the current fiscal year.
That makes sense. Ms. Young?
It does, but I mean, I, I guess I want to go big or go home.
I mean, I, I think the, the proposed budget is a recommendation that now belongs to the school board, and it has not been presented to the city or county yet.
Until next Friday.
All right. Um, so I would like to, without belaboring the conversation, just go around and see if this is a budget that the board does support. Um, as we lean into our, uh, conversations with our funding partners and into taking action on the twenty-first. So if I can begin with Ms. Ortega?
So I'm just, I'm nervous. Um, and I don't know what, I, you know, there's lots of reasons why we wouldn't talk about further, other cuts. But when, it's, we're going to get a number at some point. And it, it's either going to match this or it's not, and it's not going to exceed it. So, um, you know, at what point do we have further conversations? I just, do we need to pl- plan? Do we need to?
Without speaking for Dr. Heron, I, I think that, um, well, let me not speak for you.
So if we present a budget, whether it's eight million or ten million or whatever, ha- whatever the board chooses at this point, and once they, we have a budget from the county and city, and they, they, they will approve whatever they've put in their budget. Their budget, I believe, is coming out. We're hoping to have some sense of it before the end of the month. And then we'll see what's in the county budget. I think the city's usually a little bit later. So I don't know that we'll see that piece yet.
I think it might be this month as well.
Okay. And so we'll see what's in their budget for schools. And so that'll give us a very real, you know, a, a figure that we'll know what they're prepared to support. Um, if we send a budget across and it presents not supported, then we will have to come back and look at what we're going to do.
So my concern with, um, trimming anymore at this point is that, um, we know that, um, safety and discipline are huge issues right now in all sixteen of our schools. And, uh, when, if we get to that point where we've really got to go back to pushing pause buttons again, um, it really will begin to affect safety and, and discipline in our schools. Uh, we need these ten teachers. They, our schools need the support that this budget seeks to, seeks to offer. Um, again, we, we've trimmed it down from sixteen, or I say we, but, uh, having been in the room, uh, being a part of the conversations with Dr. Heron and her team, have trimmed it down from sixteen to nine, uh, eight point four, in fact. Um, no small feat, um, especially given what we're seeing, even at the kindergarten level, um, with, with discipline and lack of educational decorum. So, um, this is one that I absolutely support. We, you're right, Ms. Ortega, um, we're not going to get more. Uh, it's either going to be this or something less. But I can, I can support this, having been a part of the conversations in this room with, uh, my board colleagues, with Dr. Heron, having heard the discussions, answered the questions, gone to, um, to the drawing room and trimmed where, uh, where we could and continue to survive and continue to be a thriving division, one that is attractive to, to teachers and faculty and, um, and, and live for another day. So this is definitely one that I can support. I, I would hate to have to trim it further. And I know that's a conversation that we're going to have to have, uh, next Wednesday, I think, on the seventeenth. Friday, is it Friday? Thank you. I'll be there Friday. Um, but i- i- it's definitely one that I, I'm willing to have. So, um, Ms. Ortega, did you have other thoughts before we?
No, no, I mean, I've been along for the evolution of this as well, so I, I support it. I support what we're putting forward. I'm just nervous.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think we're all feeling that. Ms. Hunley, your thoughts?
Um, I'm just going to keep it simple. I have always wanted to shoot high with the ten and land at eight. But I also have listened to all the conversation and I understand, and I, um, I don't think I'm the only one out there on the limb with the shoot for ten and at eight, but I believe the majority, um, we agreed on the eight. And so that's where I am, but, um, I wanted the ten.
Ms. Donner?
Um, I concur with Mrs. Hunley. I believe that we should ask for the ten percent if that's what we believe that the teachers need. And so I think from there, then you have conversations with the funding bodies around, like, what is and is not possible. I understand why we're going in at eight percent, and I think, I think my nervousness is in the direction of, again, if we come in at eight and then they said, well, no, it's seven or it's six, then, you know, we have already kind of come in lower than we thought we, let's say, I have voted on something that I think is lower than it should have been, and then it comes in even lower. And I think that is, you know, is, I think as a county and as a city, we have to stand behind what is important to us and what is important to, you know, the type of fabric of the community that we want to build. And so, you know, there are many different constituents in this, in this, where we live. And, you know, really thinking through, like, how do we support schools and support children and support families and support the, um, the children that are going to be here to continue to serve? And so I think, you know, thinking about that, and yes, there's many different funding projects and constituencies and things that people want done, and sometimes you have to figure out where is the fire? And it feels like the fire is in our education system at the moment. And so I think, you know, being the firefighter, saying it's ten percent, and it needs to be to be able to calm this fire so that we can retain our teachers, so that we can support our students and add the staff. That's where we need to come in and ask, um, and then, you know, let everyone have their conversations from there.
Oh, well, I agree with both Ms. Hunley and Ms. Donner. Um, one of, I mean, uh, Mr. Chair, you talked about discipline and safety. Um, one, one of my biggest concerns is that we're going to lose staff. Um, we, we, we struggle to maintain our staff and, and keep people on board, and we have excellent teachers. I want to keep them all on board. I'm, I'm for going in at the ten percent and then doing the ask. And then if we have to come back and start cutting, then that, that's a different story. But I think not to do the ask for it is a mistake. That's, and I, other than that, I support the budget. But I do, I would like very much to see that we ask for the ten percent and be realistic about where our teachers are. I don't want to lose staff, so.
I have to say, I agree with, um, Ms. Hunley, Donner and Young. And we've got a huge, um, shortfall. But, uh, I also think we need to ask for what we need and let the chips fall as they may. So ask for what we feel our teachers need, uh, in light of the fact that we all are seeing the numbers, we're seeing the stats, we're seeing what's happening with teacher shortages across the Commonwealth. And, um, we're here to support WJCC schools and, and I want us to support the people who are, are working every day for these kids. And I don't know how the chips are going to fall. I ju- I just don't. But I, I do feel like, um, ask for a budget of need, and I think we, and hopefully they'll come in at seven percent with a state and we'll be okay. But, um, anyway, I think I'm going to go with what you guys are saying.
Yeah, I fully support, uh, uh, this budget. I, I, and I think an eight percent, uh, uh, salary increase for teachers is a, is a, uh, uh, it's, 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 I believe it's more reachable and it's, um, uh, more defensible than anything that moves into a two-digit, um, salary increase. Uh, I, I really, I understand that, um, we're trying to ke- catch up and, and keep up. Um, but, uh, uh, but a, a lot of people are not getting ten percent raises. They're not getting eight percent raises. They're not getting any raises. And I, um, and I, so I, I think, uh, uh, I think the budget has been pared down as much as it could possibly be um, and still meet the needs, um, of the school division. So, um, um, I stand behind, behind this budget.
I just have a, a question. Well, I want to say for the record that I, it's not that I don't support ten percent raise for teachers. So I, I would love to give teachers and all staff ten percent. So I just don't want to be, like, excluded from this group of people that are saying they want to give ten percent. My question is stra- strategically, do we run the risk of getting less by asking for too much? That's my question. And if not, then, you know, I, you know, if it's really just shoot for the stars, then shoot for the stars. But I do think there's a little bit of strategy involved, and that's where, that's my concern.
I, I don't know that. That's, yeah, that's, no.
Ms. Young, did you have something to offer?
Well, I mean, and the, the other, the other aspect of this, which is, is a true shooting gallery, is we don't know what the legislature is going to do. We absolutely do not. But I personally believe that we need to ask for, you're talking about a budget of need, and I, and part of that budget is supporting our teachers, and that's why I totally support the ten percent. And we might as well ask for what we need. If this is a true budget of need, which I know that Dr. Heron and, and her staff have worked diligently, but then, let's, let's do the ten percent.
So I'm hearing that, uh, a majority of our board would like to see the superintendent's recommended budget amended to show a ten percent salary increase, um, which would mean a ten point six odd million dollar shortfall that we'd be, uh, asking our funding partners to, to foot the bill on. Okay. So, uh, wh- while I agree with you, Dr. Beers, I think that's the will of the board, and so I think we want to see that. Um, let's see how that, how that plays out. Dr. Heron, do you have words?
Just a, a comment. I mean, I think we've, we've been, we've been very diligent, and we built it on the governor's budget, which was five percent, uh, assuming we were three percent above. Uh, we don't know where the general assembly is going to land. If they do land on, on seven, to Ms. Donner's point, we're only one percent above. Uh, we're already aware that most other divisions will hit seven, if not go above it. So at this moment, we don't know how competitive we'll be at seven or eight percent. We, we just don't know the answer to that question. So, you know, there's good reason, you know, we've done the best we can and, um, and, and obviously we go with the will of the board.
Dr. Heron, could you, uh, remind the board, remind us what the stipulations are, um, to, to our funding partners on the governor's five percent or his, or the potential seven percent that we're kind of hypothesizing? What are the stipulations?
We, we, we present on the governor's budget because that's the only thing we know definitively. But I think we should also perhaps show the slide that, uh, Ms. Yuen has at the end that shows the, the huge gap between the House and the Senate, because there's a huge gap between those and it's going to land somewhere in the middle. And, but both do support a seven percent raise, and I think that's good to present to our funding partners as well.
And the five percent now, if that were to push through, what would our funding partners have to do to secure that for us?
Five percent, um, well, five percent is just over a billion.
Six million.
Per percent, we pay, funding partners pay a significant portion of it, obviously. Ms. Yuen is working hard to get the number.
Sorry, Ms. Young.
That's okay.
But thank you.
So for a five percent, um, salary increase that costs us in the operating fund, um, five point five million, and the state revenue that we're expected to receive is three point seven million. So that's about one point eight million that the localities.
Okay. And so if the, if the locality said, well, we can't do the one point eight, then we don't get the five percent. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's correct.
Right. And so what might a seven percent look like, uh, as far as the funding partners' responsibility to participate? Do, do you have any idea?
I don't have that information with me.
It'll be seven point seven, and then the percentage divided local and state. So we can-
My concern is that perhaps, eh, as we're hypothesizing a, a seven percent and then our one versus our three, um, there is still a, a participatory kind of response that our funding partners have to engage in. Would seven percent be too much for them to say, yes, we engage with you on that so that you have this ten percent or this eight percent? So, um, these are my concerns. Those are my concerns, yeah. So, i- it sounds like we're firm, though, on ten percent as it stands with the governor's budget right now, five and five. Five mandatory, five essential. Okay. Dr. Heron, that's what we'd like to see.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any other talking points around the budget, Dr. Beers? I don't think your mic's on, Dr. Beers.
I, I want to make sure that I interpret this correctly. I'm looking at the, uh, that expenditure increase slide, and I see retention bonus, and there's a dash and a one percent. Is that a minus one percent, or is it?
No, it's just a one percent, one-time retention bonus.
Right, so in addition to whatever their salary is, they get an additional one percent. I know it's not part of the salary, but it is, it is a bonus, and it takes the eight to nine.
Yes, sir, and that's in the governor's budget?
Right.
It's, it's in the Senate, it's in the Senate budget, it's not in the House budget. Have I got that the right way, Ryan?
You're right.
Correct, it's not in the House budget. The Senate version is a little different. It's not a percentage.
And the Senate is not a percentage. It's actually one, it's an extra.
One thousand, I believe.
It's a one thousand rather than a percentage. So again, we're left not knowing what to do with that. It, it may end up in the mix or it may not.
And it, and in the end, that ends up costing us more than if we just got another percent, which would cost-
It costs us less, but it doesn't mean the same to the employee.
Right.
But the Senate version is a thousand dollars, like the bonuses we have been given before.
Right, but I mean, either, any kind, any type of bonus costs us more than if we just got it, rid of it and added some more to the salary.
Absolutely, absolutely. And that's in the budget right now.
All right. Thank you for the discussion, uh, for the, uh, direction that we're, uh, asking the superintendent to take on the budget. We're going to move on to our policies. I believe we've got seven to review this evening. Um, item nine one, review, review revisions to policy I G A C, Teaching About Religion. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Keever's going to take us through the high level, uh, and some of the policies tonight. And then other staff members are here to respond to questions as well. Mr. Keever?
Excuse me. Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, board members. The first policy, nine zero one, is policy I G A C, which is currently titled Teaching About Religion. V S B A has a policy which is I N D C titled- V S B A has a policy which is I N D C titled Religion in the Schools. Uh our policy was last reviewed in June of twenty, excuse me, in June of two thousand and one. If it had been twenty, we'd be in a different scenario, wouldn't we? We are proposing uh some shifts in this particular policy with respect to right out of the gate, changing the title. Uh the the title that had been in place since two thousand and one talks about teaching about religion. However, the um the full context of the policy is not necessarily about teaching religion. It's about religion in the place in schools, and so we feel like initially the the first recommendation would be a change in the title. Uh and then there are some subsequent pieces of edits within the policy itself um that you can see in terms of the strike-throughs. The overarching piece for us is that um that it's really about how religion in schools sits versus teaching about religion. I believe the committee, I don't believe the committee did support this particular shift and happy to answer questions if you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Keever, any questions on uh I G A C, looks really straightforward, me. Okay, thank you, Mr. Keever, we'll move on to uh item nine two, I G B F.
I G B F is currently titled Limited English Proficient Students. Uh this policy was adopted in twenty eighteen, the V S B A model policy is entitled. English learners through dialogue as a as a senior leadership team within curriculum and instruction. We did feel like there were some important revisions to make to this particular policy. Starting by um looking at it in a more affirmative way versus a deficit way and changing the title from limited. English proficient students to English learners, uh there are some other changes throughout the policy that correspond to. Procedures that are in place in order to safeguard education for these students. Uh and explaining some of the specifics that parents can anticipate um when those students are enrolled. May I answer any questions?
Thank you to uh our policy committee for doing the heavy lifting ahead of our meetings. Make these uh reviews go really, really well, really quickly, item nine three, um G B N, Mr. Keever.
Yes, sir, G B N, uh the the next slate of policies are are generally in the G section. Uh with the exception of the last one that I'll talk about, but nine zero three is G B N, Staff Hiring Procedures. Uh this particular policy, uh we felt like needed to be reformatted some to be consistent with other policies. And to incorporate language from the V S B A model that talks about uh filling. Filling positions outside of normal procedures, uh which allow some type of flexibility for superintendent in the school board. To make some staffing and hiring decisions, it also formally indicates that the application system is an electronic. Tracking system uh for student, for not students, but for employees to apply for or prospective employees to apply for positions. Within the school division.
Thank you, Mr. Keever. We've all had an opportunity to review these uh ahead of uh this evening's meeting, uh any concerns about G B N? Okay, we'll move on to item nine four, uh policy G C B, Professional Staff Contracts.
Is that, I've got staff salary schedules, am I wrong? G C B A staff salary schedules?
On nine four.
Oh, gosh.
G C B.
Yes, we can do G C B, let me get to.
Or or we can skip ahead.
No, we'll do G C B, let's do professional staff contracts, G C B. This particular policy uh was last revised in in twenty seventeen, uh the formatting was updated. Uh there are no substantive content changes for G C B, uh it's within our current five-year cycle, maybe just a hair outside of that. Five-year cycle, uh there are some, uh there's an additional clause that we added around the um. Leadership, assigned leadership responsibilities, which is a stipend position, we felt like that needed to be included. Uh the board might recall that about a year and a half ago or so now, we added a a specific policy for. Uh stipend positions or supplementary pay that that we made some changes to.
Okay, pause a moment, looking for. We'll get there, okay, we'll move on to, now we're ready for G C B A.
Now we are ready for G C B A. Here we go, excuse me, my order is all out of out of order, staff salary schedules, G C B A, uh no material. Substantive changes to this particular policy, it is more formatting changes and updating some cross-references.
Does this also cover stipends?
It does not, that's a supplementary pay policy.
Okay.
And the the board may be aware that you approve a a salary or paybook in the May of each year. And that that fulfills a requirement for this particular policy.
Thank you. Alright, uh nine six, um G D G, Support Staff Probation.
Yes, sir, this is a added language to address the probationary period for transfers to new positions. Uh it also is revised to mirror the V S B A policy, G D G, Support Staff Probationary Period.
And what's written here is new support personnel will be placed on probationary status until they have completed a minimum of six months of service, so that's just reworded.
It is reworded, that's correct, but it also says if if you have completed a successful probationary period in one position and moved to another. Uh there is an additional period of probation that's attached.
Thank you. And that additional is six months?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Item nine seven.
Do we do we need to specify that? Does it say it?
Yeah.
It doesn't say that specifically about the additional.
Yeah, it does.
Does it?
Does it?
It would be my contention that the first line talks about the probationary period being six months, so we we've defined probationary period as six months. And if you have a second one, it it's still an additional six months.
Thanks.
Okay, are we good with that? Nine seven, uh L E A, Student Teaching and Internships.
Uh yes, sir, this this policy was last revised in April of nineteen eighty-four. Uh and the the revision to this, the the reason we're bringing this policy forward this evening is that um. Our student-teacher placement process is frankly in no way aligned with the policy that governs that. Uh the the student-teachers are placed in concert with local colleges and universities and working through human resources. And school administrators to help identify cooperating teachers. Different colleges and universities have different mechanisms by which you can serve as a cooperating teacher. And and the idea that there is a select committee in place to to foster that and that people could be paid, et cetera, is just simply not valid. Uh V S B A retired their policy uh some years ago as well, and this is one that we feel like should be retired. Our process within human resources and school leadership and working with schools would would not change, we still want student-teachers. Uh but the idea of this particular policy is no longer valid for us.
Do we have any issues retiring this? Okay, alright, thank you, thank you, Mr. Keever.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your work into our fantastic policy committee as well. Thank you, guys, uh item ten one, uh we're gonna look for a motion to approve our personnel actions this evening, is there a member with a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve personal actions as presented.
Oh, we lost.
She's in the bathroom.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Who was that, Ms. Young, thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. We might. Take a pause here for a moment, I didn't realize we had lost someone. Uh while we pause, can I get positive confirmation that we can add our policies to our consent agenda for next meeting? Yeah, good, excellent, thank you. We have a motion, would you take the roll slowly?
Young.
I will answer as slowly as possible, yes.
For Beers.
Yes.
Mrs. Donner.
I will say hi. Because slowly.
Mrs. Hummel. Mrs. Hunley.
Hi.
Ms. Ordigo.
Hunley, would you disagree with that? I'm just joking, thank you, Hunley, and Ms. Ordigo was a an affirmative.
For Dow.
Hi, thank you, alright, uh so we'll uh move on to our board member comments as we ride out the evening, can we start with you, Dr. Beers?
Um I don't have a lot to say tonight, I I would just once again. Uh mention that I fully support uh the budget that the superintendent uh has brought to us and uh wanna recognize. The hundreds of hours, and I know it's hundreds of hours, that uh Mrs. Yuen and and our supposed superintendent. Have done um trying to um satisfy as you know, as many. As many constituents as as they can, given given the constraints and the uncertainty. And uh you know, the the problem, the uncertainty, this is nothing new. This just seems to be um a you know, al- almost an annual. Well, let's cross our fingers and 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 see what happens, but um I just wanna recognize how much. Uh hard work has been done uh by the superintendent and her staff, thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Dr. Beers, Ms. Hummel.
Um, yeah, I've been out of out of commission, so I haven't had a whole lot of involvement doing anything. Since our board retreat on uh February seventeenth, uh I. I do think we were positively mentioned in the press with the teacher uh store. So I think that was something that the W J C C Foundation supports, uh this teacher store and we were. Uh in the local news about that, which I think is really cool. Um I also agree that there's a lot of work that goes in every year with the budget and every year. It's a it's a toss-up of. How, you know, the funding partners have to balance. The schools along with the fire department and the police department and um everything else, um hopefully. Hopefully, the school system. Is clearly one of the most critical, critical pieces of our community's existence. And so I'm hopeful that um that everyone will come together and support. Support our our budget with the uh ten percent added to it and. I'll just keep my fingers crossed, but it's every single year, it's like this, it's a hell of a way to do a budget, to try to do a budget when you don't know what the. Government, the state government's gonna do, you don't know what your funding partners have on their plate, it's just. What we're what we deal with every single year, so.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel, Ms. Young.
What she just said, um so to for the superintendent to have to put together a budget without. There's no concrete facts, we know it was passed in the in the past. And we know that the board of supervisors and the city come up with the amount they would like to pay. Unfortunately, the needs of our school division are more usually and uh and the fact that there's no end of year spending anymore is. I think that's crippling almost, I mean, I do appreciate it going into the C I P. But I do want to say that the budget that's going to be presented to our funding departments, funding partners is a. Budget of need and for me, part of that need is the ten percent raise, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young, Ms. Donner.
Uh I echo what my colleagues have said around, one, thank you, Ms. Yuen and Dr. Heron, I know that this is hard and a lot of work. Um and so I appreciate you, everything that you've done and having to go back and revise again. Based on the uh will of the board, um and I also agree that this is just immensely important. You know, there are different times in which different parts of our community need attention and we are at the stage where. Our schools and our teachers and our faculty and staff and children need the attention and so. I know I wholeheartedly believe that our funding partners also believe in the power of of our educational system and all of the benefits that it brings to this area. Both economically, from a uh real estate perspective, uh for just the fabric of the community, providing. Service providers, right, all of that is really important and so this is the time to step up and support that piece of our community. Um on a bit of a lighter note, I got to do Read Across America at Matthew Whaley Elementary School and that was an amazing experience. It was um I had a very kind group of third graders that gave me a lot of grace. As I read them a fabulous book, so I just appreciate the invitation for that and look forward to doing. One or two more throughout the division and those are all my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Donner, Ms. Hunley.
Piggybacking on that, I did go to Matthew Whaley as well, third grade, Miss LaCombs class for Read Across America and then uh no. That was at Matoka, Miss Solder Holmes class was uh second grade at Matthew Whaley. And Miss Pastrick's class, first grade at D J, and again, that is just so good to see kids just um. So eager to hear or read aloud and um this went to the symphony for the fourth grade uh throughout the division. I I know it was in two different separate times, cause we have so many fourth graders, but to be able to get a free concert and uh. To hear the fourth graders play those recorders, I remember when my daughter played the recorder, it didn't sound like that, but all of them were playing along with the symphony. And that was just uh wonderful, um also, we were able to be in this room this week, Heather Klein and I as J M U alumnis. J M U did a book uh appreciation for Abby Sworzer Swerner, the Newport News teacher and um. We were just gonna give books to Newport News, but ended up with five hundred and eighty books, so we ended up um being able to present. All of our elementary librarians, twelve books and majority of them were hardback as well, and then we also gave to West Point, New Kent. Newport News and York, and um so that was uh. A a feel-good moment to know that these books will be in children's hands and then um I echo exactly what. All of my board colleagues said about the ten percent raise and I just feel like um you know, our teachers have done. What they were supposed to do, they went, they came to us, they wrote letters, they went to the local, went state, they um have done. Everything in their power to to, you know, ask and receive the ten percent and I have always been a firm believer in. We have not, cause we asked not, and so I just say we need to ask and see where it falls, but we need to ask. Um yes, I don't want our teachers going to other divisions, I don't want them to go to private sectors, I don't. Want permanent subs in our rooms, I want the current staff we have to stay and I want the others to see. Our um salary scale and want to come and be here as well, so I totally support the ten percent, but I also. Acknowledge all the hard work that went in, but I also know that our teachers work extremely hard and our children need them in the classrooms, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley, Ms. Ordigo.
Um I also got to do uh Read Across America at Matthew Whaley, I was in Ms. Smith's uh first grade class and. Um they're just delightful, very well behaved and um I got a lot of questions, they wanted to know a lot of details about. My favorite food and if I had a boyfriend. Among other things.
What grade was this?
First grade.
First grade, alright.
So, um and then I also wanted to congratulate the uh students at Hornsby who who participated in in History Day. And the ones that are now moving on to regional, so the next steps, there were several that were selected to move on to regional, which will be held in Virginia Beach. And from there, winners go to Richmond and from there, winners go to uh National and D C, so um several of our students have moved on to. Um Regional and um just congratulations to them, but then also wanna reiterate congratulations to every kid who participated in that. Because that was a lot of work and it was completely voluntary and and they all won because they all learned and so that's the most important part. For as for the budget, I I do commend Dr. Heron and and her staff for. The huge, huge task that it is to put together a budget anyway, even if everything was uh was not what it is. Um and then we, you know, at the request of the board, we asked them to redo the numbers and come up with what they came up with and that's. That's a difficult task, I do know that I have every confidence that every single board member here. Wants the very best outcome for the teachers and we want the best outcome for the teachers because we want the best outcome for the students. Um we might have slightly differing opinions on what the best way to go go about getting that best thing is, but um. At the end of the day, that's what that's what we want, that's what we're here for and that's. But, um, at the end of the day, that's what, that's what we want, that's what we're here for, and that's what we're all gonna fight for. So, um, that being said, let's, you know, on to the next one.
So, thank you, Ms. Ordigo. Thank you to, um, my board colleagues for being active and engaged throughout this entire process of, um, taking in information from Dr. Heron and her, her team, um, deliberating, um, and being present. And, and then this conversation this evening. Thank you for it. Um, now, thank you, Dr. Heron, for, um, leading the charge as you have consistently every year. And yet, you're pointing at Ms. Ewing, absolutely. Um, the, the tireless work that, uh, goes into building, as Ms. Ordigo points, points out, just any budget at all, but this is a unique year. Um, a, a shortfall, uh, of this, um, size we haven't seen, I think, since James Blair was built. Um, so, um, and, and we got it to that point because of all the effort behind the scenes to say, you know, what can we do without this year, uh, and still be a, a beacon of a school division that all other divisions look to. Uh, and that's, that's not, um, smoke. That's, that's the reality, um, of what we're, what we live in and what we enjoy here in W J C C schools. So thank you, Dr. Heron, and to your team. Um, I too, uh, was at Matthew Whaley for, uh, Read Across America, and I, I was privileged to sit in with Ms. Brown's class. And I didn't have as many questions as I was hoping for, but I did have one very funny one. Uh, I, I had to ask her three times, what, are you, are you asking what I think you're asking? She said, what did your mom look like? When you were in elementary school. I said, well, yeah, I gotta, I think she looked pretty much like I do, but with long hair, so. They were fun. It, it was a fun group and a great book, great book that Ms. Brown picked out, talking about, really just talking about kindness and generosity. Um, and, uh, seeing that person that's alone, that doesn't have a friend, that needs a friend, and not waiting, but being that friend. And, uh, it, it was just something that we all need to hear and take in. So, uh, great opportunity to be in the classroom with, with some really sweet kids. Uh, we'll move on to our upcoming events. If it'll work for me, here we go. Uh, the Special Education Advisory Committee meets on March ninth at six thirty in room three oh nine here at the Annex of Central Office. Our policy committee, very hard-working committee, meets again on March fifteenth at eight thirty in the morning, room one oh eight here at Central Office. Doesn't have our, oh, that's probably gonna be on the meetings, excuse me. Uh, Twenty First Century Career Ready Advisory Committee meets on March twenty-ninth at three thirty, uh, room three hundred here at the Annex. And then, um, Consortium of State School Boards Association, uh, has their inaugural national conference, which, uh, all of our board colleagues will be, um, participating in. I believe Dr. Heron will be there as well.
Sure.
Uh, that's gonna be in, uh, this is Tampa. I've been saying Miami this whole time, but Tampa, Florida.
Definitely Tampa.
I don't know why I thought Miami, but I had Miami in my head.
I'll be in Tampa.
I'll be in Tampa.
Miss Alar booked your flights, we're good.
I don't know.
I think Miss Alar booked your flight.
I mean, exactly, yeah. Would have been a big oops. That'll be March thirty-first through April second. All right, upcoming meetings, uh, March seventeenth, our joint meeting with our funding partners at the city and county. And that'll be at the Stryker Center, not at the, um, not at the Rex Center where it usually is. But it will be at the Stryker Center, four twelve Boundary Street, eight thirty in the morning. And then closed session and regular meeting on March twenty-first, six and six thirty respectively, um, beginning here and then pushing over to the gymnasium at James Blair, six thirty. Followed by, uh, April eleventh meetings, closed session and work session, uh, four and four thirty, uh, here in Central Office Annex. All right. So we've set our agenda for our next meeting with our consent agenda items, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.